Good evening. Welcome to the July 13, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Pat Rowland from Woodside Bible Church lead us with the invocation. If you would please rise for that and continue standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the pastor. Good evening Pastor.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before you this evening with humble hearts and we come before you and just ask for your peace and ask for your direction upon this meeting. We pray and we thank you for the gift of life that you've given us and for the freedoms that we have to gather and to discuss and to talk about our great city and the issues that are before us. We pray for wisdom and discernment for all involved and for our city leaders here and their public service. We thank you for that. We pray, God, that as we discuss and as we talk that we seek understanding and that we act with character and integrity. And most of all, God, we just ask that we are stewards of your creation and the resources you've provided and we just turn this meeting over to you in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregigned, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes, here.
All present, our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And C1 is a presentation to recognize Dr. Martin Wunsch who donated $50,000 to the City of Troy Public Library. And I would like to introduce Kathy Russ, our library director, that will introduce our special guests this evening and provide us with great information on this item. Good evening.
Good evening Mayor. Good evening Members of City Council. I am so incredibly honored to be here with you tonight and to be here with Dr. Martin Wunsch. He has made a donation, as you said, to the Troy Public Library in the amount of $50,000 from the estate of Lucille Makarov. Lucille was an outreach patron, which means she could not come to the library, so we brought the library to her. She believed in the power of words and in books, that the books were the conveyor of ideas and that you could never have too many books to have those ideas in your mind. So I'd like to invite Dr. Wunsch to tell us a little bit more about this donation and about Lucille.
Thank you. Good evening Doctor.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here and to share the story of my donation. There's basically two reasons behind it. The first one is that I think goes without saying that any community needs an excellent library. I had the special glimpse of what our library does for its patrons with Lucille. Lucille in 2013 was 83 years old. She didn't drive for many years. She could barely get around on her walker. And every time I visited her for about 10 or 12 years, she had a big stack of heavy-duty books on her kitchen table. History, politics, economics. She got them because Mr. Roger brought them to her. Now, the only Mr. Roger I can think of is the fellow on TV. When she went into the ICU in 2013, I returned about 13 such books to the library. When I began looking into making this donation, I found out that Mr. Roger was Kathy's father. And when I asked Kathy about this kind of work, she mentioned that she has about 100 people in our city that the library provides at-home services to. I think in a city of 83,000 that we can provide such special services to 100 people is just absolutely awesome. When I spoke with Kathy and with Phil Quick, our assistant director, they told me about 20 to 30 hours a week that they provide for children and teens special programs during the school year and they try to double that over the summer. I can think of no better way to provide a donation to the library to help in all of those causes. Now, the second reason for my donation is to remember Lucille, a very close friend of mine, and have a memorial to her and to briefly share her story with you. When she went into the ICU in 2013, she said two things to me. One is, Marty, I think I will die this year. I want to die this year. And I knew Lucille very well. I'm her psychologist and her friend. And I knew that she wasn't depressed or macabre. She had just felt that she had lived long enough and was willing to surrender. Second thing she said was, be sure to take care of Wayne State. They gave me my start. Well, the care she meant was a $100,000 CD that she had kept for many years that we used to establish a scholarship in her name at Wayne State. And this year has been the second year I've been able to give that scholarship out to a deserving student. The start she meant was that in 1953 she got her Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology from Wayne State. Now, that's 60 years ago and I think that's probably older than a number of our council people. So, let's check my notes here. Okay, the start she meant was she became a computer research librarian at General Motors from 1955 to 1985. Computer research librarian was defined very differently then than today. Computers, you can carry your smartphone around. You can carry your laptop around. At that time, your computer was as big as a room and you used a semi to carry it around. Research, we all go to the University of Google. She went to the University of Stax. She went to stacks of books and stacks of newspapers and stacks of journals and she was damn good at it. A psychologist friend of mine indicated to me, he worked with her at General Motors, that she had saved General Motors probably millions of dollars in patent defense by finding the appropriate articles for the defense. When she left General Motors, which would be in 1985, she stayed in touch with the General Motors crew for 30 years. They cared about her so much that every three years they invited her to one of their reunions. In 1983, while she was in the ICU, I got a letter from her former department chairperson saying, where are you Lucille? So I gave him a call and explained that she was in the ICU. And a number of the people that she knew from General Motors 30 years before came and visited her at the ICU and later at her memorial services. I personally met Lucille because we all lived in the same condos, the Northfield Hills. And several of us started looking after her and each week we would take her out to a doctor's appointment. We would bring her food, do light household chores. We all became friends. We would go out to birthday parties together and Lucille, it would be nothing for her to invite a violinist from the DSO to come to one of her parties and play for the birthday person. We also learned that she had a number of other people doing the same thing for her, bringing her food and books and just coming by to talk with her. And these people cut across everything, across all ages, genders, employment, ethnicities, nationalities. They all came to spend time with her. I used to say that she held court in her kitchen, but it would be more appropriate to say that she had in a senior assisted living facility in her kitchen because that made it possible for her to stay on board and live a very rich life. Now, my last paragraph, I'm going to read. Lucille passed on Wednesday, November 19, 2013. She was to me a life that demonstrated that learning, communication, and caring do not know any boundaries. They are ageless and they apply to all peoples and to all people across all our differences. I'm very appreciative of the council's acknowledgement and listening to Lucille's story today. And the library is placing some memorial plaques for her in our facility. Thank you all very much.
Thank you Doctor. It's a great story and it's a great city that has many, many people that are like Lucille and it's great to hear her story. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the donation.
Thank you very much. Glad to make it.
Thank you. Next is C2, another presentation, and Kathy Russ, our library director, is ready for the next presentation.
Yes, it's a very great night for the library. I'm pleased to introduce Sue Martin, who is the president of the Friends of the Troy Public Library. The Friends have again made a generous donation to the library, but they have exceeded their usual generosity by leaps and bounds, so I'll let Sue tell you about that.
Well, and in great part for a similar, oops, sorry.
Sorry.
That's all right. In great part for a similar reason as the donation by Ms. Makarov. We had a patron as well who was very generous to the Friends and we've been able to use the donation from Mr. John Reinhardt to establish what we call a legacy fund. And this year, almost $50,000 of our over $111,000 donation to the library came from that legacy fund. The portion that's from Mr. Reinhardt will allow us to completely redo the meeting room in terms of the furniture, the chairs, the tables. And for those who aren't aware, the meeting room at the library is where most of the presentations and programs and enrichment takes place in the library. The Friends, through our proceeds, are able to provide that programming to the library in all aspects, across all levels, to the youth, the teens, the adults, all across. Basically, if you've attended a program, taken part in a summer reading, used things like our mobile computer lab, taken classes, employment-style classes, learning how to write resumes, interview skills, all of those sorts of things come from the donations of the Friends. And we're able to do that through the revenue from our bookshop and our Friends shop. The donations from the patrons of the city and others who bring their books to us, their used books, are then taken, sorted, and put out for sale every weekend. And several times a week, we have a whole crew of little book fairies who come up and sort and take them down and get them ready for our sale. In addition, our gift shop is open on a near-daily basis as well, all from volunteers. And we've shared before how the Corps of Volunteers has put in over 8,000 hours per year. And where they paid, that's a several thousand dollar level of employment that we provide free because people love our library. So, keeping the library current, putting us into the technological age, I think libraries are only better with more technology. So many of us use Kindles. We can show you how to download books in a lot of the programs, live streaming music, mobile iPad cart for, I'm sorry, mobile tech cart for some of the classes that we used to teach in the tech room now can be taken, not just in the library, but all around. And so, lots and lots of things. We love our Friends. If anyone would like to join us, look us up on the web, Facebook, Twitter, and keep the Friends helping make the library the great place that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the donation that is an example of what this library means to our city when we listen to presentations tonight. So, thanks for all the work from the Friends. Thank you.
Can I say something?
So, just to wrap up, I thought I should tell you how the library plans to use these wonderful and extremely generous donations. As Ms. Martin mentioned, the Friends are going to provide a mobile computer lab and they're going to redo the meeting room furniture. With Dr. Wunsch's donation, we plan to do a library teen area makeover. The teens have been asking for a teen space for several years and we're pleased to be able to finally do that for them. We're also going to do some renovations in our story and craft room and update and I guess just supplement our adult services, those books that Lucille loved so much. So, I think throughout the course of this next year, you're going to see a lot of great aesthetic and technology improvements at the library. Hopefully, it'll improve our already great services and make it even more attractive place for people to come. So, thank you very much for the time tonight.
Thank you. And once again, thank you Doctor. Next is C3. It's a fireworks report with a presentation from Chief of Police Gary Mayer. Good evening Chief.
Good evening Mayor. Mayor and Council, with me tonight is Sergeant Nate Gobler from our Operations Division. He's going to discuss some of the enforcement efforts that we made. Thank you. The intent tonight is to discuss the fireworks issue regarding, mainly focusing on the time period around the Fourth of July and the calls for service and ordinance violations that we experienced. First up, a brief overview of the law is where Michigan Fireworks Safety Act occurred in 2011 and that's what changed everything when it comes to where we're at with the fireworks. Basically, what that did was it took and enhanced greatly the amount of fireworks that were available to consumers and made them a lot louder and made them a lot brighter with a lot more displays for regular consumer fireworks. Things that you used to see at fireworks shows were now available to consumers to use. And what that did is that brought fireworks from planned fireworks to parks and that kind of thing that cities may put on into your neighborhoods. So, the Michigan law regulates purchase, possession, sale, and use of certain fireworks. Our ordinance numbers there, it's important to note that our city ordinances cannot be any more restrictive than what the state law is. By state law, they can't be more restrictive. So, the main points for discussion tonight are when fireworks can legally be used and that is the day preceding and the day of, and the day preceding, the day of, and the day following national holidays. The Fourth of July is one of those holidays. It's limited to the hours between 8:00 AM and midnight, as illustrated on the clock we have at the bottom of this slide. No ignition or discharge can be occurring while under the influence of alcohol or drugs or on public property, church property or property of another, without express permission. This is especially important as we see a lot of violations at our school properties. Violations, laws, misdemeanor punished will by 90 days in jail and a fine of $500. The enforcement is divided up among the state of Michigan. The state enforces codes regarding the sale of the fireworks. The police department enforces all the ordinances and the fire department inspects retail establishments for compliance. It's interesting to note that the fire departments, if they find a violation at a sales establishment, doesn't take action, they have to refer it to the Bureau of Fire Services. There's some of the legal consumer fireworks illustrated there. You see that basically you've got things like mortars that you may hear that make a very loud noise when they launch and also when they ignite. It's very loud. What we did is, coming into the season, we made efforts to educate the public. Both the police and fire department did press releases. We all use social media to try to get the word out via social media, Facebook and other social media. And on the city website, we put information regarding when fireworks were allowed and the law regarding fireworks. Just to point out some of the safety issues that we are concerned about with fireworks and some of the injuries that we see, as you can see, the vast majority of injuries are to the hands and fingers. And there's little slides showing the safety efforts that are made to educate the public. The data source of this is the National Fire Prevention Association, the Centers for Disease Control, and Trauma Burnout of Ann Arbor. Just wanted to point out some of the injuries and deaths that have occurred. On July 2nd in Grand Rapids, there was a leg injury to a kayaker. On July 4th in Port Santalac, a expert, a man hired to do a fireworks show, was injured. Had injuries to his hand and face. And on July 5th in Wall Lake, unfortunately, a 47-year-old man died when he placed a large mortar fireworks shell to his head and ignited it and exploded and killed him. You may recall last year, the meteorologist from Channel 7, Lawson I, also in a fireworks incident.
Now, 30 days before the holiday, June 6th through July 6th, during that enforcement period, we had 71 calls for service in the City of Troy regarding fireworks. There's a couple that are highlighted on there. What we were finding is, once we responded to the fireworks, especially not directly around the holiday, there were short displays. We'd get into the neighborhood and either the people had moved in and completed the, had completed their display or if we had found some in the area, we'd start into the subdivision and then narrowing down the house proved to be fairly difficult. The other thing we were finding, if you look at the map that's illustrated in the slide, is that a lot of the complaints were along the Dequinter corridor. We'd respond to the area, get into the subdivision in front of the complainant's house, and we're finding that a lot of the fireworks were actually coming on the other side of Dequinter and Sterling Heights. And July 2nd through July 6th, which was two days before the holiday and two days after, we had a total of 37 complaints regarding fireworks. We found that 70% of those complaints occurred during the restricted times and 30% were during the legal times. And there were citations that were issued for violations during that time period, whether it be on school property or other violations causing damage or if there was an intoxicated subject involved. Again, what we're finding during those is a lot of the complaints were along the Dequinter corridor and we attribute a lot of them to the Sterling Heights locations. This is a photo that was taken on July 6th. It was on Caldwell Drive and it just shows the type of fireworks that are being used in the city now. We didn't see these type of fireworks used before the law change. These are mortars. They're going to make a lot more noise and it's going to, as you can see, there's quite a big display there.
As Sergeant Gobler said, we noted, our officers reported a lot of the violations. We had complaints coming from residents that came in through the manager's office that were in that area close to Dequinter Road. In checking with Sterling Heights Police Department and Warren Police Department, we noted that both of those departments had, Sterling Heights had three times the amount of fireworks complaints than we had and Warren had four times the amount of fireworks complaints that we have. So, it shows we've got, they have a lot more fireworks issues than we do, which we attribute to why a lot of the people along that area that we illustrated on the map were calling us to complain about the noise. And the final point is looking at this from a bit of a historical perspective, is the top is the five-day period from the 2nd to the 6th and the bottom is the one-month period from the June 6th to July 6th. And what you're seeing there is in 2011, as we started seeing the increase, when the fireworks law changed, the big increase was in '12 and then in '13, we had, it still stayed up. Last year and this year for us during the time period, that one month, it's identical numbers of calls for service. And around the Fourth of July, it actually decreased a little bit. Now, I'd like to say this because of our outreach and education efforts, but I think reality is going to be is people just don't call us because they know it's the law and there's nothing that can be done about it. So, people are frustrated and have just stopped calling. So, the overriding point and what we make sure, have written to people when we get the complaints on it, is it's a state law. There's nothing we can do about it unless we have violations that occur outside the time period that we've talked about already. So, that's our presentation. We're ready to answer any questions or maybe.
Thank you Chief. Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Chief, that picture you had up there with 10,000 pieces of fireworks, where does a guy store that and is that safe to store it? Because I've seen, I went to buy a couple places that had twice that in their garage. Is that a safety issue?
The way the law is written is it's not an issue, a law violation for them. It would be for us. If we took, if we confiscated all those fireworks for some reason, which if they're illegal, we can't confiscate them, but if we were, the burden is put on us to store them in a bunker. But the citizens, if a citizen has them, they don't have to have those same restrictions. So, we fall under OSHA, they don't.
So, they keep it in your basement or?
Yes. And there's been some, there was an incident over in Sterling, in St. Clair Shores where there was an ignition that was improper that led, that didn't lead to any injuries or death, but it was a lot of property damage that occurred.
Clearly, this is one of the most stupid laws they've ever made up in Lansing. I mean, I don't know anybody in Sterling Heights or Warren or Troy who thinks this is, makes any sense. And I stopped by a couple of places that sell these things. If they think, if Lansing thinks they're getting their money on the taxes, most of these guys work in cash and I didn't see a little bag where they're dropping dollars in for their tax money. So, I mean, this is really, I think, invasion on everybody's privacy in the whole state, but it is what it is. Can they launch in the streets? That's city property. Can they?
Did you say, could they?
Yeah, can they?
No, they cannot. And we, a couple of violations that we had where we didn't get there in time, we did educate the homeowners that they cannot use city streets to do that.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Certainly.
Councilman Pennington.
So, Chief, it's obviously that, it's obvious to me that you're frustrated and we're frustrated with the law also because we get a lot, you know, in council, we get a lot of calls on this. So, back to one question, it's legal to store that much fireworks in his garage or in his house without, that's?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So, if people are frustrated, they need to, you know, write Lansing. They need to, you know, that's just what they need to do.
We have, Mayor?
Sure.
We have indicated to people that write us or I talk to, that they need to get in touch with their state lawmakers, that they're the ones that have the power to change this. And we have had, there has been some efforts from some of our representatives to take action and change it. So, they have been working on it.
I'm surprised that you don't get more calls just because of the amount of fireworks that go off in the city. And we were just talking about that before the meeting, that every year, it's just, it's amazing the amount.
I believe people are frustrated.
I think the chief hit it on the head. I think people are so frustrated because what's the sense in calling when the police's hands are tied behind their back, city council's hands are tied, our city attorney's hands are tied because Lansing is just sleepwalking through an issue that is frustrating the entire state. It's very disturbing. Councilman Henderson.
Do we have a feel for the laws in Sterling Heights and Warren with regard to fireworks? Are they more or less stringent than our ordinance?
I would defer that question to city attorney Mayor.
City Attorney Bloom.
Yes, thank you Mayor. I did review the Sterling Heights ordinance and it is very similar to ours, so they do have the limitations as to the hours. So, in other words, it's as restrictive as it can possibly be under the state law. I would also just indicate that I did look today. There has been, there is a bill that's pending in the state senate. There's a bill that's pending in the House, but neither of them have moved since about April. So, right now, it's not moving anywhere.
Does anybody, my recollection is that 2012, somewhere around there, we sent a resolution to Lansing.
Yes.
Could you refresh my memory on that and is it possible, maybe we should refresh that and send another one to Lansing?
I would indicate that in the House, it is our representative, Representative Howelak, who has introduced a bill to curb some of the fireworks and to give the locals more control over the fireworks that are occurring. We did send a resolution to council, when I refer to we, it's council, and the state legislature, after receiving that, did make some amendments to provide for some time limitations that the locals were able to do that. So, we did amend our ordinances after that time period. But if council is inclined to send another, you know, message to the legislature, certainly that would be appropriate and we can draft something.
I'm in favor of sending some stronger language to Lansing. I think it's inexcusable that they're taking their time to address an issue that's very strong in, at least in our city, against what's going on here. So, the Act of 2011 certainly changed everything for the worse. Is there consensus on?
Absolutely.
We're ready to send another resolution. Begging the police department for your patience on an issue that has to be very frustrating.
Thank you Mayor.
There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I want his board and committee appointments. So I will defer -- there are no mayoral appointments this evening, so I would defer to Mayor Pro Tem Campbell for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one appointment tonight to vote on, and that's for the zoning board of appeals. That's who put the name Glenn Clark back into his position, and his term will now expire for 30, 2018.
Support.
Ann Thomas Desmond.
I'm sorry, Ann Thomas Desmond, I'm sorry, yes. And he also -- his term will also expire for 30, 2018.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we appoint Thomas Desmond and Glenn Clark to the zoning board of appeals for terms that expire for 30 of 2018. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Excuse me, Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to them again for volunteering to serve the city as a volunteer. I, too, are board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations or city council nominations this evening. And we hope to clear this docket soon. I, three, is no request for closed session this evening, so we will move to I, four, which is a contract ratification. And I see Jeanette Manning, our human resources director, moving forward. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am very pleased to be here to announce that we have reached another tentative agreement with one of our collective bargaining groups. This group, the Michigan Association of Police, or MAP, represents the clerical and non-sworn employees in the police department and throughout the entire city. Notable in these negotiations is that we reached our agreement with just two bargaining sessions, and we're pleased with our agreement. I hope you reviewed it in the packet. City management definitely recommends ratifying the contract.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeanette this evening? I will point out that although it said we did not have a closed session request this evening, we did meet in closed session at 6 o'clock to discuss this issue. So if there are no questions from staff, is someone prepared to read the resolution?
Councilman Pennington.
I'd like to move I, four, the contract ratification. Michigan Association of Police resolved that a collective bargaining agreement between the city Troy and the Michigan Association of Police, MAP, for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018, is hereby ratified by the city council of the city of Troy, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the final agreement.
Moved by Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we approve I, four, as read into the record by Councilman Pennington. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? If not, would somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Henderson.
Mayor, resolve that the Troy city council hereby approves all items on a consent agenda as presented with the exception of -- well, there are no exceptions, which shall be considered after consent agenda items. So accept all items on a consent agenda.
Got it. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented this evening. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are two announcements of public hearings this evening. A is an announcement for July 20th, 2015, a rezoning application. File ZOTA Z746, which is the proposed fire station number four, which is on the north side of Maple, east of John R., Section 25, which is a rezoning from R1E, which is one family residential district to NNC, neighborhood node C. And the other announcement is that on July 20th, 2015, zoning ordinance text amendment, file ZOTA 247 pertaining to oil and gas extraction, will be on the 20th, also for a public hearing. Next is K2, which are memorandums. And there is a memorandum indicating a timeline for the library millage question, which will be on the November 3rd to 2015 city general election. So there is a memorandum indicating that timeline in the agenda packet. Any discussion from council on those items or staff? Next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call on Stanley Yolkowicz, Troy residents. I hope I didn't butcher your name. Good evening.
Good evening.
We did receive a letter at the table.
Right. You're right. I happened to see Cindy outside earlier, and she made copies for everyone. Mr. Mayor and council, first of all, thank you for letting me be here. What I want to talk about is PEG services for -- PEG services being public education and government programming for the residents that have cable service in the city of Troy. Today, there are three cable companies in Troy, WOW, Comcast, and AT&amp;T U-verse. If I was a member of Comcast or WOW, for example, tonight, I could be watching this meeting. Because I happen to subscribe to U-verse, I cannot watch it. And the reason -- I guess there's two reasons for that, and it's on my background here. The first reason being, there's equipment and/or facilities that have to be purchased to provide that service to me in my home over cable. And the second reason is, and is there's a communication authority in the area that has recommended to this -- to the city groups that the cities not purchase equipment to provide these services since it's provided by WOW and Comcast for free. However, I guess you should know that, you know, communities around us, like Sterling Heights, Southfield, Warren, do provide cable services to all their customers, irregardless of who the cable provider might be. In the case of this consortium that exists that Troy is a member of, I recently found out that Ferndale now provides cable services or, you know, PEG services to all of its cable providers. So I guess I'm here tonight to ask the city council to look into this matter so that all cable, you know, that all customers in the city of Troy, regardless of their cable provider, can have access to public programming and government programming and stuff like that. So I'd like it investigated, so, all right?
Thank you. If you hang around here, we'll have a little discussion after we hear from the other residents this evening.
Oh, okay.
It's been an issue for a while.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I will call on James Savage, Troy resident.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I read in the local paper that the planning department and planning commission is considering a proposal to build 35 apartment units on a half-acre lot. I am concerned with high-density housing in general, not just this project. High-density housing may achieve more tax dollars per acre, but my observations lead me to believe that high-density housing, be it in a big American city or a small town in England, is not good for the community. It might be good for a while, well, the housing market is booming, but as soon as the downturn occurs, they become cheap housing, which usually attracts crime and blight or both. The exception would be cities like Chicago or New York, where there's always people willing to pay $3,000, $4,000 a month for a flat just to be near Wall Street or Broadway. But this is not Chicago or New York, and I am very glad it isn't. Fifty years ago, Troy was the ideal location for the American dream. A three-bedroom house on a half-acre lot with trees, a garage, a basement rec room with a pool table, a swing set, or maybe a pool in the backyard. Fashions in housing goes in cycles, but I believe the American dream will stay. But at a pleasant rate of progress, half-acre or quarter-acre lots will be gone forever. If you consider the traffic volume on Rochester Road, it is very obvious that our infrastructure is not keeping pace with our population increase. I would ask you to keep in mind that progress also has its downsides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Nardi, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Council. I just want to say a few words about noise pollution, and there happened to be an article in the Troy Times last week about it stating that communities have a lot to do with regulating it. I don't want to mention any names, but the city of Troy has totally destroyed the quality of life on Waddles Road by making it a truck route and also by allowing commercial or non-residential use west of Rochester Road. You consider a lot of things when people request a zoning change or variance of some sort, but there's things that you seem to overlook. One of them would be, especially with a retail establishment, there's got to be delivery trucks going by our house all the time. There's got to be snowplows sliding across the parking lot in the middle of the night all winter long. Most businesses nowadays have dumpsters getting emptied all hours of the day and night. And I did say night. I know you have an ordinance. It's not enforced. Brookfield Academy's dumpster was emptied last Friday at 4:25 in the morning. This is routine for my area. I live right on Waddles Road, and I can hear the dumpsters banging around at Walsh College. It's off far the sound travels. So in the future, it would be nice if you would consider some of these other things that you normally overlook when making decisions like that, considering noise levels. Thank you very much. Mayor, I would like to speak to you after the meeting for a minute.
Sure. Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up this evening to speak. Next on the agenda is city council or city administration response to public comment. Or anyone on table that wishes to discuss any of the comments. City manager Kishnik, did you --
Yeah.
I was going to call on you if you --
I appreciate it. Well, very simply, I think what I heard was I'd be more than willing to meet with the first speaker and not be party to the last speaker after the meeting. Right?
Fair enough.
Is that fair?
Fair. Councilman Henderson.
Did we want to address the conversation about the cable access, or do we want to do that as a separate conversation with city manager?
I think we can comment on that if we want to, and the city manager can have a discussion, but I'm going to comment on it also, so go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, my comment is that this is an issue that we've been dealing with for quite some time, and AT&amp;T has been an obstacle to the city. And it was my understanding that there wasn't much that we could do about it, and it would be very costly to the city of Troy to provide that service to our residents. I don't know what Ferndale decided to do, whether they decided to bear the cost themselves, but it would be very costly to the city of Troy to do that. And I'll defer to City Attorney Bloom if she has any other information. But this is a battle we've been fighting for quite some time.
Mayor, I would just echo your sentiments that we have been trying. We have tried to work with AT&amp;T. I know that we've had ICMA is also looking into it. ICCA is also looking into it, but is not prepared to go into the entire history of tonight's meeting.
Councilman Henderson.
Do we have any idea what does it cost for a cable company to come in if we had to buy the equipment? A ballpark?
I know Ms. Stewart probably has that figure because we've done that research in the past, but I just don't have that information handy.
And Mr. Yolkovich, if you were -- the meeting will be over shortly, and the city manager will be happy to speak with you when the meeting's over. Any other comments from council? There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilman Gottlieb.
Just, I appreciate the fact that we had sent, and I think you said 2011, a letter, and the state took some action with respect to the fireworks. And if there's something that we can do to make that stronger, I also received several comments about if there was anything we could do, so I echo the sentiments expressed. Anything we can do.
Any other comments from council? Next are reports. Are there any comments from council regarding the reports in the packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session at the end of the meeting, as we've had that closed session before this meeting, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.